Monday, August 6, 2012, public hearings to order. It's four items on the agenda. First item is Paul Sanders submitted an application for rezoning 13.7 acres from map parcel 058 to 0058, and general agricultural A2, intensive agriculture A1, to be combined with 058 to 009. Property located at 1466 Union Point Road. Josh, want to enlighten us?
The 13 acres that we're rezoning, the request is for already has poultry houses on the property. This is really a correction to zone those chicken houses as intensive agriculture as opposed to general agriculture. He does intend to build two new chicken houses on the south. Survey for this is in there that I'm referencing. Two new chicken houses on the south side of the existing barns. He wants to use all the other houses as collateral in order to do that. In order to record this survey, he needs to rezone those 13 acres as intensive agriculture. So that's what he's doing. They all meet appropriate setbacks, 600 feet from a residence and 200 feet from property lines. You know, combine it with the piece of property that all the rest of the chicken houses are on.
And the position of the planning commission?
Planning commission voted unanimously to approve the rezoning from general agriculture to intensive agriculture.
One of the things I felt is keeping the guideline, basically these areas are being recorded. Anybody wishing to speak, sign up right now. I don't have any more before here than you have in the month. Being no one signed up, there's no sense in going through the rest of the guidelines. I will say that the official vote will take place at our regular meeting next week and there'll be no public discussion on these issues after tonight. Any questions?
He said he is gonna build houses that are laid on this property.
I think he's in process of building right now.
He's in property because...
But where he's building is new houses is already zoned intensive agriculture.
Can you just get this back here?
I didn't get that. Paul, go, sir. What was the move? Well, he's tearing some houses down already. Five and a half, he's dead it up to that same travel, didn't he? Tearing up the... A door, not a door. You said you wanted to combine this with the tip.
Sorry.
That's really, I didn't say it. I didn't get it. That was you. You may have come up with that idea.
Matt Lou on item number two, commercial plan, submitted an application for rezoning 0.063 acres from map parcel 116 to 016 from rural residential AR to single-family residential R1, to be combined with map parcel 116 to 016A. Now, the property is located at 72 Frank Matthews Road. Kelly, you want to read the dynamic motion in a minute?
This 1.6 acres was foreclosed on and when the bank surveyed the property, they realized the well was not inside the property lines of the 1.6 acres. This survey is to correct that and there's a understanding with the neighbor that the well should go with the home. And that 0.063 acres is own rural residential in order to combine it with guy of rezonies to single-family residential and that's what this request intended to do. So that 0.063 acres will go with the 1.6 and the well will go with the home. The planning commission voted unanimously to approve this rezonies.
Now, we're on the third item. Timothy Hux submitted an application for rezoning five acres from map parcel 176 to 009 from general agricultural A2 to rural residential AR. The property is located at 1060 Hom Caldwell Road.
The existing tract on the Hom Caldwell Road is just under 25 acres. And the request is to split off five acres of it, ending up with 19.8 acre tract and a five acre tract. And to rezone the five acre tract to rural residential and sell it. And the buyers, the prospective buyers intend to put a home on that five acre tract.
We used to refer to AR as agricultural residential, Josh.
Yeah. Agricultural rural residential is what it says and agricultural slide rural residential is what it's called in the zoning ordinance. I just couldn't use easier to say rural residential, but I'll call it whatever. If things much appropriate.
I think rural residential is agricultural residential.
Right. I did get a phone call about an hour ago on this particular one from one of the neighbors, Terry Gaunt. He intends to be here this evening, just wasn't able to make it yet.
That's probably not true.
Could be him there. He might be just in town. Mr. Gaunt?
Yes. I'd like to try to hear.
We were just discussing the division next to your property. I saw that expressed your interest, but I guess it's here to you.
Okay, I'll listen.
There has been some issues with trespassing and other similar issues related to residential development in this area. Mr. Gaunt purchased one of the properties neighboring the tract under consideration for hunting and recreation and other similar purposes to use. Due to the fact that there are existing lots that are similar to this one already created in the vicinity and in other places along Caldwell Road, they didn't see the need to continue to divide land for residential development when lots of record already existed that were buildable, that were very similar to this one. And to expand residential development in the area where they prefer not have residential development. Okay. I'm not sure if I got that right or not.
Is your tract similar to this tract here?
I have told the two tracts down there, one's 197 acres and one's 98 acres, so they're going on a Harman Caldwell Road. Making a total of 295 collective acres on both sides of the road. Now, I had my neighbor on one side, his cabinet name of Tim Etheridge, I guess it is, and almost due across the street from him, the developers probably seven years ago went in and divided out and has been posted signs, tracts ranging from three acres to five acres available right through there. Very few of which have sold.
Josh, if you cut five acres off that track, doesn't that make a non-conforming AR track or A2 track?
On the 19.8?
Mm-hmm.
Yes. And the planning commission recommended a variance for tract one on the survey, do you have the survey?
Mm-hmm.
They're like recommending to keep the rest of it, A2.
Did anybody suggest even why they thought that'd be the best thing to do? If they express the need to do that, I mean...
There wasn't much discussion around the remainder of property, tract one, just that it's sort of intended to divide it further to keep it general agriculture. And by doing that, then in order to divide it further, it'd have to come back before Do you rezone the entire 25 acre tract to rural residential and it would be viable if the five acre tract did not come back before us?
Assuming the five acre tract is approved, would require variances if the property owner aware of that?
Yes.
If one of these lots is sold off, this one, 25 acres or, you know, a small lot that was not sold off, but the deed called for none cannot divide the property anymore. Deed called that, we had come up before sometime, there was one, it was a lot sold off because it was a church road. And if you wanted to sell the buyer the property, you couldn't do it because it's in the deed that you can sell it out.
Correct.
So I'm sure that's checked into the place. Lot is sold.
That brokerage wasn't in.
Not a lot of money in there.
Wasn't in the deed on this particular transfer. Now, they have a transfer ownership yet. That's, you know, they want to record this in order to transfer ownership. So essentially, you could add state consent to the, the new deed. Say it something like that.
I don't know. I think reasonable.
Mr. Gaunt's proposition on modifying this is based on the fact that there are other lots available in the community, is that right? Personally, that perhaps the type of home that may be brought in as opposed to building a nice home. But I can't control progress, I don't realize that. Very fully aware of that. It just seems odd that you've got a 26 acre tract sandwiched between a 254 acre that the pits is owned, 295 that I own, and others that you want to parse out.
I guess with the exception of variance, really, nothing you can do to prevent this division, Josh. Really, it's an AR lot and it's on a dirt road. What else could, what reasons could you deny that?
There's a set of evaluation standards in section 1400 and most of them look at provision of public services. And if a division like this would exceed the requirement for services, would exceed what we can provide, then you might want to consider either expanding the cost of expanding public services or denying the division. Most of the evaluation standards are linked in some way or another to provision of public services. It's a dirt road, but we have a number of five acre lot on dirt roads anyway, with the exception of family divisions. So we need that provision. That the intent is low density, low density development. Again, I referenced the evaluation standards in the zoning ordinance on whether or not to approve it.
What would, what services would be required of this lot potentially that might exceed our legislative requirement?
Services that I would look at is fire protection, road maintenance. We don't provide water out there. Don't provide sewer out there. Provide plenty of protection out there. Pick up the kids in school buses. Those are the kind of services that I would look at.
What would the alternative be, Josh, if we grant the change in zoning for this lot, the five acre lot, not granting the variance on that 19 acre?
Then the result is to rezone the entire 25 acre parcel to rural residential.
Or just, maybe just get the 19.8 separated and have two.
And have what?
Well, I mean, you could just, could you separate and have one, do a request for five acres, rural residential and 19.8, one, two? Rural residential?
Yes.
I mean, you'd like to have a variance to do those.
Yes, you could.
And they could have done that from the beginning, right?
The implication with zoning tract one as rural residential is now it, you know, can be divided into five acre parcels without going back through, you know, additional five acre parcels. You leave the general agriculture that it's at least close to being 4.2 acres away. And would be divisible without going back before us.
Any questions for Josh and Mr. Gaunt? Any further questions on item number three? We'll go to item number four. Ricky Garrett submitted an application for rezoning map parcel 052027, which is 1.45 acres from Light Industrial to Business, Highway Business, A2. Property located at 1597 Athens Road. The applicant also requests a variance for reduction of the required number of parking spaces due to the lot size and a variance for reduction of the required number of trees in the landscape due to the lot size.
One copy of the construction plan up here and one copy of the conference of site development plan is probably looking at. I worked directly with the landscape architect on this one and it simply was very challenging to fit more parking spaces and more trees on this lot that's an acre and a half and still have enough room for a second field and room to maneuver trucks and automobiles that would be pulling in to the gas station. So that's the reasoning for the two variances, the reduction in number of parking spaces and reduction in the landscaping requirements. We did go back and the planning commission recommended, including interconnectivity. You look on the east and west sides of that drawing, you'll see connectivity to the lots beside it to avoid what we have up here by subway and bells and friends where you've got to pull back out on 78 to go to the next, to go to the next door if you wanted to go to bells and subway. The zoning ordinance encourages, requires interconnectivity between partials, so we went back and put that in. One thing to note about this particular development is that the tortoise department transportation has not yet completed its review of whether or not deceleration lanes and left turn lanes are required. If they do come back and say that these deceleration lane or left turn lane is required, then I, we got to bring it back and forth to board commissioners, probably back and forth to planning commission, but I didn't want to wait on the state departments in order to run through the county. I didn't want Mike to be waiting on the county in order to sell it and run. You can rule on the rezonies, go ahead and rule on the rezonies and I'll just withhold the building permits until the Department of Agriculture has issued business license for gasoline and restaurant and everything and Department of Transportation is approved as access to the state highway.
Will it be turned this building up or is it already there?
Yes.
Just the building?
Yes. New building will have a pitched roof and seater siding and kind of ports on the front. Drawers do a pretty good job indicating how, how look, campy will be on the front as typically, as fine typically. It'll have six day employees work in the restaurant and the community store.
There's a lot of good going though. The tires, neighbors say their tires still stuck back there.
There may be, I don't know what the intent is, but they'll have to have all that gone in order to get equipment in to do construction and grading and for the new building, digging the hole for the gas, for the tanks. So I'm not sure what they'll do with those, I'm sure they'll dispose those properly.
One of the neighbors says there's tread loads in front of his place, not tires.
In front of it?
In front of his property. Tires, that tread load, tires, old tires there, plus there's some back in the bushes and trees is joined, the other problem in them. That's what I'm, that's the blame I've got from this. Everybody's blaming everybody else, said that somebody else is responsible for getting them up, you know?
For cleaning up the tires.
Yeah. Well, ain't the one really responsible for that. And that's what, good matter. And that pretty much would be Ricky, I would think, especially being that property, only being in the entire business right there. The only concern I have with any of it, if there is any, is, as Josh was showing me that retaining wall that's going down, is that retaining wall on the property line or is it set back any?
It's about five feet, five more feet off of the property line. You want enough space to get it there and maintain it.
The inset, about feet on the...
On his side.
Right. And then the purgus area there for water absorption or whatever, because if they pave all that lot there and that water's gotta go, and it will be a lot coming off the shed roof as well as being guttered, you know, piped out. And then if they pave all that parking lot there, there'd be, you know, a lot more water now where, because parking lot's kind of chewed up a little bit and there's also a lot of this purgus area where it's soaking in at the moment. I mean, where is that water going to be dumped to?
Only about 30% of the lot is not paved. That meets the 25% requirement. The stormwater could be, could be an issue.
Yeah, that's the only problem is just because I am downhill from that. Everybody now, still does it now, but it does go through all purgus area, so it kind of absorbs in. Where when you do more paving and concrete, you're gonna have more rush floodwater, like, you know, coming across there. And I just concern where that's gonna go, is it just gonna come out on the back of my property there? And of course, it's nothing right now, but grown up, I intend just to make that, you know, improve that a good bit. And the only ditch that I realize that there, coming off the road, it's low enough to get to, has to be crossed to get over to the back of my property to get into a ditch that actually runs down, I guess eventually goes to a creek down there behind Leon Ash or somewhere back off down that property there. That's the only thing I can see with it, just that, you know, where's all that water once they pave all that, where's all that headed?
The general grade of that lot, those go towards the back and towards your property?
It all comes, yeah, it all comes to the love point down there. I mean, right now, it all comes across as it is, but there also is a lot of absorption area, you know, purgus area that soaps in.
Yeah.
And when they do asphalt it and pave all that, then it's gonna be a lot more collected water, it's gotta, you know, be put somewhere.
Did the request for the rezoning come from Mr. Wilson or from Ricky?
Yeah.
It's our understanding that Mr. Wilson's not the true owner, that Ricky still is, so we're confused as to how he was allowed to even make the request.
That's correct. Ricky's still the owner, so he's the applicant as far as the paperwork goes and if he signed the, the letter saying that Mike is his representative in this...
So he's got the power. Yeah, you're correct. It's powerful. Ricky submitted this application, right? And that's what it says right here.
Yeah, that he's, he's the applicant and then Mike Wilson is his representative.
Is he still willing to go through this even though he doesn't have the DOT blessing?
Is Mike willing to go through with it?
Whoever the applicant is, I mean, you know, this, this is gonna change zoning designation.
They expected, my understanding is that Mike expected the GI to take the time with it. They didn't, they didn't expect GI to be done with it by the time we could get this through. So yes, he does intend to follow through with, with this even though we don't have access approval from Department of Transportation.
If they were to require deceleration lane coming from the west east on, fundamentally on ashes, would require acquiring property from him or is there enough roadway there for the deceleration lane to enter this over there or, or do you know?
I don't see it. I don't, I don't see the property, I don't see it myself, I don't see it up there without the acquisition Leon. And if they use the lane also coming from the east, if they're gonna do a, you know, a center lane, turn lane there, where would that expansion be from? Is it going to encroach in again, over the roadway of the property I have or over towards Smokey Road? Somewhere that would have to be also a drift.
Yeah.
Of course, they might not acquire deceleration.
Might not.
I'm just thinking.
I don't see how they would weigh this out.
I just don't see Leon approving, you know, or selling, willingly selling any of that property.
I wouldn't.
So some questions do remain about the design of this and some of the requirements and why that could be premature to review it.
Well, if you change the zoning designation with their request, it isn't gonna change, it still might not change whether we, I doubt it would change whether we approve the zoning change.
Correct.
So, you know, they still have to jump to those. That's just his problem. I'm just curious to know is that if he did not get that, the approval from GI because of points like Keith made or route made, then is he still interested in having his zoning designation changed? So...
I don't know the answer to that.
But that's all this application is requesting at this point, to go from Light Industrial to Highway Business.
Correct.
So that's really all we're looking at now, just looking at the plan.
And he...
I thought it was already highway business, highway industrial.
So tire stores, light industrial?
Tire store, garage is, is light industrial? They're working for the public, they don't work for industry. They don't build like that plant came in with the chemical plant, that's light industrial. When you've got public coming into a place, that's not light industrial, that's business. It's gotta have operative license, a business license, and sales tax number. And you call it light industrial.
Oh, that's what the zoning ordinance called it, I don't call it anything, that's still what it is.
That's the way of a zone, it was probably incorrectly done initially.
I think it was grocery store there, I don't know.
Complaints there sometime.
Yes, it is, it's over, old tanks there now.
There are tanks still underground?
I don't, I don't, I don't see evidence of ever been dug up.
They might have some that.
Ricky's brother.
No, that's what Vaughn left behind, or anyone.
His brother grew, Point Seti is in there for a year or two, too, way, way back.
Is that?
Yeah, Ricky's brother, I forget which one. Yeah, Point Seti is in there.
All right, let's stay focused on the issue at hand. Way out here now. All right, uh, so I'll send him, he knows he doesn't have the DOT information, he didn't withdraw a permit, the request, so, unless he does, that's, this is still on. Is there any other questions? Really? You said if we approve this, then he cannot get a permit to go following until he asks all his permits and all, I'm sure.
Yes. And if changes are made to that design, you have to see that again, too?
So I'm in the trees, we'll take it out, I'm in the, this, this required to have.
It's based on the parking calculations, so by, by my calculations, the required was 26 parking spaces. Twenty-one there with a handicap space, that's 22 total. Uh, and then the landscaping is based on a number of parking spaces and the, um, size of, uh, paved area. There should have been something like 33 trees total, um, with the 26 spaces. And what you see there, I think, is 18, 18 trees. We tried to fit more trees on the property.
And that's, that's the main requirements of changing the zoning designation?
Yeah, in the comprehensive site, site development plan. In order to get a building permit, or in order to do a rezone that involves highway business, gotta have a comprehensive site development plan, part of the comprehensive site development plan is meeting all the parking requirements and all the landscaping requirements.
I kept 17, is that what you said?
I said 18, it could have been 18.
I can overlook them. I suppose all the circles are a tree, right, all the circles?
Right.
Yeah, some is not stored out, so I didn't know whether they were possibly leaving out or what.
They're just a different, uh, variety of tree, and then there's, uh, some buffering down the side next to Mr. Ash's place. Some shrubbery.
And site development plan, complete site development plan doesn't include any deceler, or deceler lanes, Josh? Community, that's not part of the plan?
Any requirements from state agencies is, is part of the comprehensive site development plan, yeah?
I'll take that back. No?
It's not a part of the site development plan. It could be a parking somewhere, I have to look, it could be a problem under parking requirements, it could be a problem under the building, issuing building permit.
But you have to have a complete site development plan.
In order to rezon.
In order to rezon, and you don't have a variance for that part. That's what I would need to know.
For a variance for access?
Yeah. Of course, you couldn't, you couldn't survive on a, a variance, the DOT is gonna dictate whether or not they have to have or not.
Yeah.
If we approve, uh, and that is part of the requirements, and he really hadn't meant the requirements yet, I don't know that they're in order to prove. Can you look into that a little deeper and make sure, okay with that? Is there any other questions? I think we got a lot of questions, we can get answered, come down next week. No further questions, we'll go to item number five, tax and minutes for accessory structures. Also, it's a line here.
Yeah. In June, the planning commission looked at repealing section, uh, 606.1, 2, and 3, considering dimensional restrictions for accessory structures and the location of accessory structures. Right now, on lots that are less than five acres, um, and zoned in R1, AR, maybe some of the other zoning designations have a limit on the size of structures other than the primary home or the primary business building. And it's either based on the, uh, size of, of the total square footage of the first floor of the home, or it's based on the square footage of the total home, um, in different scenarios. And what we have to do currently, when people come in and want to get a permit for accessory structure, for example, a barn or garage, detached garage, anyway, um, administratively, what we have to do is ask ourselves a series of questions. How large is the property, how is the property zone, what other accessory structures are already on the property? What type of accessory structures are already on the property? How big are those other accessory structures? Uh, are they attached or detached? How big is the first floor of the residence? How big is the total square foot of the residence? And with the answer to each of those questions, do some type of math based on those characteristics, uh, in order to determine whether or not that permit can be issued. It becomes very cumbersome administratively to simply issue a permit for a barn or a garage. Um, additionally, it seems to be, um, construction of an accessory structure increases the value of the property and increases the digest without increasing cost of private services to that piece of property, from a financial point of view. And based on the administrative benefits, as well as the financial benefits, uh, of repealing those sections, um, the planning commission decided that it would be best to repeal both the dimensional restrictions, as well as the location restrictions, um, on construction of accessory structures, and that would apply in every zoning designation, residential, commercial, industrial.
Subdivision?
Yeah. In subdivisions, typically you have a protective covenant that addresses each of these issues, even without the county ordinances, uh, but it would not apply in subdivisions, it would not apply county law.
But the repeal would apply county law.
The repeal would apply county law.
But in subdivisions, you have the opportunity to create covenants that could protect you if you so wanted to, from, or to create your own rules, so to speak. And also, I guess each municipality would have their own ability to go with it or without it, or to create their own restrictions.
This wouldn't affect municipalities, yeah?
This is the unimpressed area. Comments, questions? So once you're saying you can build a, this, you could build a shop in front of your house, or?
Yes.
Other side, or behind you, or?
Well, it's meant to setback.
Yeah, setbacks still apply, 20 feet from the side rear property line, and depending on the road, how far from the right way of, of the public roads.
Let's not open the avenue for people to start their own business in that property.
Home occupation, uh, article is still in there. It still applies.
Any questions? Do you have this, uh, draft, Josh? Hey, the draft, I will read or I will not read any of them?
It'll be a simple appeal.
Mr. Bill, hold section 606, 1, 2, and 3.
1, 2, and 3. 3 is trickle down from 2, it's, uh, concerning multiple accessory structures. And they're saying if you have more than one, then the restriction applies to both of them together. So if you don't have the initial restrictions, then, in, uh, that are in 2, then 3 would apply.
Okay. Any questions? And that concludes our public hearing agenda, and this meeting, this public session is adjourned. We have about a minute recess, and we're gonna start right back into our regular meeting, uh, work session. Anybody, everybody's welcome to sit, or you're welcome to leave, just keep up, keep up stuff.